Call this meeting order, please join us for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is public input. We have one person signed up, Dr. Donnell, in regards to the traffic light at Pope in Silver Heights.
Yeah, I'd just like to express concern-
Is the red light on?
Uh, sorry.
Perfect, feel it.
I'd like to express concern about the amount of time that it's taking to repair that light. We've discussed in the past the fact that it's a multi-lane intersection. We have people going through to it at a time, we have people missing their turns because they're hesitant. It probably will not be high-speed accidents that occur there, but we will certainly have accidents if it continues. I understand the city is trying to move with its maximum speed at repairing this, but I think if this had occurred in Santa Fe, it would have been fixed in two days. So, I would just like to encourage whatever department is involved with that to make utmost haste in getting that fixed.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Council Redson?
Thank you, Mayor. As I mentioned, the next several weeks, this weekend, next week, are pretty busy for council members and for Grant County folks and everything, meeting up with the legislature and making sure that those needs for Silver City and Grant County and other groups are heard at the state and with all of our legislators across the state. So, I'm pretty excited about it. It's one of our annual things that we do. And I'll be attending the board meeting for the New Mexico Municipal League as a director, and I'm not sure, I don't think I'll be joined by Ann. And so, Mr. Gaffron, you will not be either. You'll have your stand-in doing it for you, as will Ann.
Actually, today I learned that, unknown to us attorneys in the last several years, the Municipal League Board of Directors has eliminated our vote.
What?
Ann's vote, my vote, and all the, they felt that there were too many city employees showing up and that they were gaining a majority over the elected officials. So, we do not have a vote, so I will not be going, nor will my first vice president be going.
I had no idea that that had been done.
Changed the law.
Well, look at the bylaws. We'll make sure we do that. Well, thank you, Ann. Sorry that you won't be joining us for information. I was wondering why the attorney group hadn't shown up for a while, now I know. So, thank you very much. The only other thing I'd like to say is, today was the first day of absentee ballot voting. Please use your right to vote, no matter who you may vote for. If you would like to go down to, either call the town clerk to get an absentee ballot, or you can go down to the town itself at City Hall. Don't come here to the Grant County Administration Center. And the town clerk, Ms. Vackey, will certainly help you out. And I think, just as one of the, one of those rights that we do at this time of year, and especially, well, for us, it's every year for municipal vote. But this is the beginning of a long election season, but I hope that you will all participate throughout the election season coming up. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Raymond Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, two quick thanks. I want to thank all the citizens who attended the conversations with councilor that I hosted last Wednesday, the 20th. It was, I thought, informative and fun and civil and lively. I particularly want to thank Jamie Emmerich from the Community Development Department, who came prepared to answer all kinds of questions, to Chief Reynolds, who came prepared and did answer all kinds of questions, and especially to our manager, our town manager, Alex Brown, who was a person of patience beyond belief there that night. He was wonderful. Thank you. I had a few handouts left from "What's the Law: Who You Gonna Call?", which was the theme of the conversation, and they're on the sheet, they're on the table out there. Please take one. And just for fun, I do want to let you know a little bit about our territorial charter. So, you know, we're gonna talk about this a little bit later, but a common phrase in Silver City in the early 1870s was that up north, that legislature in Santa Fe faithfully and ably misrepresented the needs of southern New Mexico. I think we hear that noun again. They got so furious that by 1875, there was actually a formal movement in Silver City and Grant County to leave New Mexico. So, this is not new news about things happening faster in Santa Fe than here.
Thank you. Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we've had a good stretch of warm weather, so watch out with our bikers and motorcycle people and people washing their cars. We're gonna have an influx of people on roads nowadays. Be patient with the bridge, and be patient with the stoplights. Thank you.
Speaking of, Council Connor?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd just like to say that for the next three weeks starting tomorrow, I will mostly be in Santa Fe, so if anyone needs to get ahold of me, email and phone is gonna work best for the next couple of weeks. The other thing is, I would just like to announce that there's gonna be an organizational meeting of the Senior Olympics of Grant County on Saturday, January 30th, which is this following Saturday, at 1 o'clock PM at the Student Memorial Building Seminar Room on the third floor. And any resident of Grant County who is 50 years of age or above and has participated in at least one local senior Olympic event is eligible to vote at this organizational meeting. The organization is being formed in order to apply to be sanctioned by the New Mexico Senior Olympics Board to hold local Olympic games. And if you need further information, you can call Mario Quintana at 575-590-2352. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the only thing I would actually like to point out is something along, as I was driving by my office, I noticed that they opened up the front of the Silco, so you could see the ticket booth. So, I'd just like to share my excitement, and I believe a lot of the excitement among a number of our community that we're about to have a full, fully operational theater here shortly. And it's almost done. I've done a quick little walkthrough, and it looks beautiful. I think it'll be something that Silver City residents will be proud of. I've always talked about, that it's, I was always kind of embarrassed the fact that in 2013 and 2014, Silver City didn't have a theater after having a theater for the century before. It's quite odd, and it's really exciting to have that. I know that Western opened up Light Hall in 2015, which is wonderful, and it'll be, it'll be great to have those two theaters up and running. I think it's just a small piece, but it's illustrating that Silver City's moving in the right direction. You look at that little infrastructure improvement, you look at all the road infrastructure improvements that are going on, bridge, a lot of the mill overlay that the DOT is putting out, just on the outside. It's gonna look really neat here in a few years. Silver City is gonna be something that people are gonna be real proud of, driving into and enjoying the area. Something real exciting. Does anybody else need round two? Okay, moving on. Any changes to the agenda? Approval of minutes? Council Annis Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've moved to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City of January 12th, 2016.
Mr. Ray, your second motion is stated.
We have a motion of second to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City, January 12th, 2016. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion of second that is written in the record. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're gonna be in a very, very short recess while the council gets his glasses. Next item on the agenda, under Reports, is Bianca Padilla with the Program Coordinator of the Juvenile Probation and Parole Office.
One technical thing. I'm just surprised with my title. I'm a little bit worried about it. Can you guys see it okay? So, my name is Bianca Padilla. I'm the Program Coordinator of the Juvenile Probation Office. I actually don't need this, but I was all good with it. So, my name's Bianca. I'm the Program Coordinator of the Juvenile Probation Office. Today's presentation is titled "Partners in Crime." Any guesses why? No, no. Partners in Crime: The Town of Silver City and the Juvenile Probation Office. So, besides being a little bit humorous, we actually have a great relationship with the town, and we thought it'd be cute, play on words. So, in your packets, I gave you a continuum model for you to look at. Tonight's presentation is mainly gonna focus on our educational supportive services and our community youth building program. But we just wanna give you an overview of our continuum that we've built over the last 19 years in Grant County. It focuses on prevention and intervention, and we kinda have a saying that you can either pay me now or pay me later. Do you wanna pay for youth resources when they're incarcerated as adults and older teens, or would you rather pay ahead of time with prevention and intervention services? And we prefer to pay ahead of time, obviously. So, our continuum has graduated. We try to use consistency as far as consequences. We try to intervene, give services as much as we can, and it's stair-stepped up. So, based on what offense you commit, we really try to treat everybody equally that comes into our office. But we'll go over that a little bit more in detail. Now, we actually have 13 different programs, but we're gonna talk about maybe four or five. So, one of our most important programs is our educational supportive services that we offer. This is one that's really transformed in the last two years, and we feel like education is our gateway to our future for our kids. And it's one of the ways where, not that we neglected, but we didn't realize how much we can make a difference with education for our youth on the probation side of things. And so, I want you guys to look at this picture. It's "A Rising Tide Lifts All Boats", by Jonathan Kennedy, I believe, 1963. So, it's more about the symbolism in the picture. The boats, some of them are battered, some of them are stranded, some of them, like our kids, they have chaotic home lives. They have a lot of instability. They're up against the odds a lot of times. And we like this theory of a rising tide lifts all boats. So, what we're trying to do is, we're trying to break this cycle that we're seeing with our kids. Almost anybody who comes into the probation office, they're behind academically, they're truant, they're tardy, they're exhibiting at-risk behavior that's leading up to that delinquency pattern. Maybe some aren't getting caught yet, but they're pushing the line. And then we see a lot of them getting further to the point where they're dropping out. They can't pass the GED. And then we just kinda have that generational cycle too, their parents repeating that same cycle. And so, we wanna see how do we break that cycle? And we know that truancy and academics are tied with delinquency. They're almost the precursor to delinquency. So, this is what we're focusing on. And the way that we're doing that is, we're looking at our educational programs. So, we, let's see, in this Silver Consolidated School District, there's about 2,800 students. In the last year, we provided 945 interventions. That's almost a third of the Silver Consolidated Schools' population. And the way we do that is through our truancy program, through our tutoring, through our school, and our summer schools. And I think we did about almost 4,000 classroom hours with our kids. And mind you, we're not teachers. We know we hire teachers. If you guys know Bub Graham, you'll know what we mean. Pray for us. We love Bub. He's fun. So, why does that matter? Why does school matter for these kids? So, what we can tell you is that we provided 743 truancy interventions last year. And so, what that meant was that those kids have been referred for missing school, either habitually truant, or just an early warning system, three, five, seven, 10 days. So, that's us getting involved with each single kid, going to the home, doing a home visit, maybe doing a phone call, doing an attendance contract, and trying to get them back in compliance with the school policy, so that if they're there, they'll learn, and that's the most important thing for us. And that they're not out on the streets, they're not out being unsupervised. We also had 84 youth in our after-school program tutoring. So, we provide free tutoring to anybody in Grant County that needs it. We have free licensed tutors, and that's Mondays and Wednesdays, because sometimes their parents can't help them with their homework, and that's the reality. I tried to do biology the other day, and the kid almost laughed me out of the room. I'm a criminal justice major for a reason. So, you know, sometimes you need that extra help with someone that can help them. Then we also had 82 youth in our JPO school. And JPO school, if you guys haven't heard about it, it's for suspended and expelled students. It's almost an alternative school. And we started it because we saw a need for it. Secure school had closed, I think, probably about four or five years ago. And there's no place for those kids to go. If you get expelled at sixth grade and you're not allowed back till seventh, eighth, ninth grade on campus, realistically, the parents aren't gonna provide homeschooling. They're not gonna be able to, there is no other alternative school. Maybe you could get into Aldo, maybe Cobra High will take you, but it's still hard on parents to make that drive, or to get bused, you know, that kind of stuff. So, we started a school in our office. That's Monday through Friday. It's five days a week. And we take the kids that are, they're high-risk behaviors. They're getting written up, they're getting suspended, or they're being kicked out of school. And so, that's the 82 kids you see there. So, 13 of those 82 were gonna be expelled. And so, we worked with Silver Consolidated Schools to try something new, what we called a provisional expulsion. So, give us a chance to work with these kids before you finally expel them. Let's add one more step in. Let them still stay enrolled in school, but come to our office, do homework. We'll provide the teachers. They provide the food and the internet and the laptops. And those kids are able to maintain credit and stay in school. And we didn't lose any of those kids, and that's really unheard of. Then we also had our 69 short-term kids. Those are kids that got a five or 10-day suspension. And I don't know how many of you guys are familiar with school grading, but if you have 10 zeros, you're gonna fail that nine weeks. You may fail that whole quarter, that whole semester if you miss 10 assignments. So, we wanted them to go somewhere, be able to do their homework and stay current, serve out their suspension in a safe place, supervised, and go back to school, and not be further behind with their classmates. So, those are those kids. So, we also ran through summer schools last summer, and that was for La Plata Middle School, Opportunity High School, and Silver High School. We served 36 different students in that program, and that was credit recovery. We don't want kids to fail one class and not graduate on time, especially seniors. You know, that would suck. No offense, but you know, no one wants to be 20 and be rocking around Silver High School. So, the summer school is really important because there wasn't any other summer school options in our community, and we thought we could help. So, that's something else that we were doing. And then we also had our sevens, our eighth graders. We had seven eighth graders who went through our middle school summer school, who weren't gonna transition to high school. And that's a really important transition from eighth grade to ninth grade. We didn't want them to miss, and we could help and bridge that gap, and we did. So, so far this year, we've had 60 students in JPO schools. We're looking at doubling our numbers, probably to about 120 by May, not including doing our summer schools. So, that's what we've been doing with education, and we think it's needed in our community, and it's really important service that we can provide, so more than just probation. So, the next part I wanna tell you guys about is our community youth building program. Has anybody heard of our community youth building program? Yay! You guys have. Okay, good. So, we think it's building youth and community. We see it as a two-edged sword. We're building our community while we're building our youth. The reason we started the program was because you have a kid who's on probation that has 300 hours of community service to do, and realistically, they're not gonna learn anything doing the same thing over and over and over again. And that's your opportunity to really become leaders in their life, teach them new skills, and have them do something that's meaningful, that they learn something from. So, this program was actually a model program from Oregon, from another county. We got grant funding to run it, and what was most important to us was that the kids found mentors. They learned skills. They found maybe something, a hobby, that they would continue after probation. They built relationships with other community members. Because our kids, their view of the world was mainly school, their friends, and probation. We're their friends too, they think. So, well, sometimes we're not their friends, but they think we are. So, that was important to us, that we did something more meaningful. So, so far, we've had this program for two years, and last year it had 200 unduplicated youth in the program. Based on the first six months of this year, we've had 75 unduplicated youth. But if you duplicate those numbers, it's been 280 kids so far in the last six months. We provided 3,400 hours of service last year to the community. So far this six months, we provided about 1,100 hours. We worked at 34 different work sites across Grant County. And when we started the program, we had one, so it's amazing, a year and a half in, to go from one partnership to 34, or one place that'll work with us to 34. And we've had 70 unduplicated mentors that show up every Saturday to hang out with the kids, work alongside and interact with them. So, these are just some of the partners and projects we have. The Silver City Museum, The Commons, Gospel Mission, Southwest Solid Waste, Off Sustainability, Habitat Restore, and the list goes on and on. I couldn't fit all 34 of them on here. So, you got about 24 up there. So, this has been our big evolution that we've seen. And this is my favorite part, is I wanna show you guys pictures. It makes me happy. So, this is the Southwest Solid Waste Authority on January 16th, so these are more recent projects. This is a before picture of what that looked like, and this is an after picture of what it looked like on that same day. And so, we started working with Southwest Solid Waste about a year and a half ago, partnering with Alex. And what we started with was cleaning up a lot of the plastic bags you guys saw, and you've seen some of those before pictures. So, we started out with that, and we evolved it into doing recycling surveys, where even the judge came through, to taking reusable items off the vehicles and taking them to the Habitat Restore, which taught the kids some personal skills. Sometimes I don't like talking to strangers. You know, surveys is good people skills they need to learn. And we've kind of evolved our project with them, but we still like to go out there once a month and maintain it. And we also work on some of the batteries. One of our kids out there, was their stereo didn't work, and in two minutes, this kid had this thing working in a landfill. I'm like, where'd you find this battery and this stereo? It was working! So, we found a hidden talent. So, they like actually going out there a lot. So, they've, and they've seen how it's changed out there, and they're proud of how nice it looks now. So, that's one of them. This is our partnership with the Habitat Restore. This is a small trailer day. I think one day we had a trailer that had 1,700 pounds reusable stuff that was taken out. And so, the kids go and they, you know, talk to them about the recycling habits, pull the items off, and we load it up, and I think that's my supervisor's trailer. She was saying, who would buy that green trailer? And it's yours, by the way. Surprise! So, that's one of our other partnerships we have. This is the Office of Sustainability. We're building benches for the Office of Sustainability. And so, Mr. Staley gave them the tools and the instructions and told them to put it together. And so, we do a lot of tool safety and basic, just basic way. I learned how to use a handsaw. The kids learned how to use a handsaw, hammers, drills. And so, we try and get them to use the skills that they learned. So, that's them assembling the benches, and that's afterwards, when the benches are done, you're ready to go to the Office of Sustainability. This is at the Volunteer Center. That's been one of our other long-term partnerships. We're getting ready for the winter garden there. And when we first started there, it literally was a dirt field. And I don't know if anybody's been to the Volunteer Center, but if you look at the transformation the last year and a half, a lot of that was involving our kids, building the greenhouse, the footings, the foundation, planting 52 fruit trees, doing the tomato vegetable garden that yielded, I think, like 800 pounds of produce for the food bank. And so, that's another place the kids are very protective of, because they put a lot of time and effort and energy into it, and that's a place that they just like to work. And so, it's kinda fun getting them to eat some arugula and stuff they never tried before. Sometimes they're not having it though. And we go on bug patrol duty sometimes, and we learn what bugs are bad for the plants, like-
What is it, Gary? Cabbage moss?
Cabbage moss, or something like that. Yeah, so we learn how to take care of those too. So, and a neat thing about the Volunteer Center is, we had a kiddo who needed to earn money for rent from his landlord. And his mom is, she's severely mentally retarded, and he takes care of all the bills, the finances. He buys the groceries. He balances their books. He walks all over town. And he had met somebody at the Volunteer Center, working there, and on his own, he worked out a deal with his landlord that if he did landscaping, that he could get money reduced off the rent. It was either that or turn off the utilities, and then the food would go bad, and this kid spawned his food, even though he's a real skinny little flak. He was happy about the food. So, he wasn't turning off electricity anytime soon. So, he went over there, and he had a problem. He didn't have any tools, and the Volunteer Center had tools, and they lent it to him. So, he walked all the way down from my house, down the Volunteer Center, got the tools, walked back, did the work, walked back. And that was great, that he had that relationship with them outside of us, and he could solve his own problem and help his mom. So, that's been a cool partnership right there. This is our Penny Park Butterfly Garden. We didn't actually plant the garden. It was done by 4H. So, this is what it looked like before we started working there. And this is during, you can see the kids are doing measuring for the fence, and we laid the footings. We did some irrigation work there, and this is what it looked like after. And our fence isn't super straight, but don't look down the side. But it's really beautiful, and the kids built it themselves, and we used handsaws to cut every piece of wood, which was a very long day, 'cause I was there that day too. We need to get some electric saws, Alex. So, but it turned out beautiful, and the kids like it. And so, that's one of our cool projects that we finished over there that they can be proud of. This is our kids enjoying the tamale fiesta. We try to do community events and not just projects. So, the kids have gone to the farmer's market. They've gone to the Blues Festival, the Tamale Fiesta. Earth Day, we try to get involved in stuff that's going on, and so that way they can learn a little bit, something different. I think this time, they literally ate two dozen tamales that I bought. With, like, it was hot, and it was burning, and they were eating them with no napkin or anything. They loved them. So, I didn't get any tamales, but they got tamales. So, that's one of the other fun things that we do, is take them, get them out in the community, have them interact. And the Trails Fest was actually their favorite, 'cause they got to meet the Forest Service and pet a donkey. I don't know who brought that donkey, but they had a good time. And this is the Reach Across America. We do this every year. We go out there with our kids, and we teach them the history about Fort Bayard. They go and identify some different graves or something that's significant to them. They found some unknown child graves, and that was important to them, what the different symbols mean on the headstones. They found family members. We helped them find their family members, and that was something neat. And so, we go and do this every year. So, that's Reach Across America. We did that, I think, a couple months ago, December. And this is our bonfire we do with the chief. This has been our newest, most popular thing, 'cause we get to light stuff on fire. So, the kids are having a good time. And this is with the Silver City Fire Department. We actually got, Food Basket donated some hot dogs and marshmallows too, so we actually had a winy roast, but it was pretty hot. I found a really long stick. But we were working on the Big Ditch Project, getting all that debris cleaned up for fire safety, and it makes it look nice down there, getting the litter picked up. So, this Saturday, we'll be at Lyons Park. If you guys wanna come, you can come. And bring kebabs or something good though, 'cause the kids like food, so. But we're gonna be cleaning up behind Domino's Lyons Park Big Ditch area this Saturday with the chief. So, this is their new favorite thing. They wanna light everything on fire, and I'm just kidding. So, that's one of our fun things. And this is actually at the Gospel Mission last Saturday. Those are our kiddos. They prepped all the food. They cooked all the food for Saturday's meal. The guy in the blue is actually the birthday boy, and he got a birthday cake. And on his own, he went and cut up his cake for each one of the home's people who came through and shared his cake. So, and they sang him "Happy Birthday", so he was really happy. And he was the lead server that day. So, that was cute, that he wanted to share his cake with them. So, and that's something we wanna start to do more often, is going to the Gospel Mission and serving as much as we can. The kids love to cook. That's one of their favorite things. They're better cooks than I am. So, and that's my kiddos, and these projects are just a few of what we've done. We've done so much, and I really want the community to see that these kids are, they're valued contributors. They're capable of a lot more. I mean, we get, we're on a waiting list. People call us, and I have to tell them we're booked. Sorry. So, it's really nice to go from no one wanting to work with you to everyone wanting to be a part of something like this. And so, we're really proud of our little kiddos. So, that gets you to the so what portion of this. So, what is it matter that we're doing all of these projects? And why it matters is, in the last five years in Grant County, the overall delinquency rate has reduced by 57% because of these programs and these services. Repeat offenders has reduced by 42%, and felony offenses is down by 64%. And we think it's because we're engaging them, we're engaging their families, we're doing parenting programs, drug and alcohol classes, wilderness camping trips, swimming programs, with the bike works, stuff like this. It's really paying dividends, and so we hope to keep doing stuff like this, 'cause it's the fun stuff. And so we hope to keep doing stuff like this, because it's the fun stuff. And then we're just within the last year. So last fiscal year, 2013-14, we had 292 delinquent offenses. Last year, that was reduced to 174. And then we went from 142 first-time offenders to 79, so that's about half. And repeat offenders went from 150 to 95. So we feel like we're getting there with reducing delinquency and adding, we're focusing on the prevention piece. So we want to tell you real quick about what we're building together. This is Gary's quote, Mr. Staley over here. He says, "It's two sides of a pair of scissors." We thought that the kids were going to be the winners out of this, but we've really seen both sides really benefit, and that's been interesting to see, like, with that one youth story about how he found that relationship, and that's what we want to see more of. We've seen the public change their perception of our kids, from, you know, considering them to be delinquents to good kids. And Gary always says that these are the worst kids we have in Grant County, we're doing really well. We've seen the kids build lasting relationships with the community members, with mentors, people they never would have met, maybe, and that's important to us. Silver City Police Department is having less negative contact with juvenile offenders, which gives them more time to focus on other matters. And we are working with Chief Reynolds to start having the kids interact with the police department, just like we do with the fire department, to start having some positive interaction, and that they get to know each other in a different way, and we think that's important. And the youth have become stakeholders in our community. They're building parks, they're encouraging recycling, they're feeding the homeless, they're getting involved in community events, they're, they're different kids. I can't tell you enough what, when I started here two years ago, what the kids were like and what they're like now. They love community service, they love school, they feel safe with us, and we hope we're making a difference. I think we are. And I think the last thing I want to tell you guys is, thank you. We have a great partnership with the Town of Silver City. They provide a lot of our oversight for our fiscal, our fiscal management, a lot of the sites we work with, our town sites, town agencies, and we couldn't do it without you guys, and we hope you're proud of the partnership we've built together. And we just want to thank you for everything that you do. Thank you. Questions?
Is there any questions? Councilor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm really delighted that you're presenting, and I have a lot of interaction with these kids, and they really are good kids.
Oh, good.
And they really are doing a whole lot, a lot of stuff. I have one question.
Sure.
So I have a number of colleagues who would really like to be engaged
Sure.
with youth like this. How do they volunteer with you?
Gary? Mr. Staley? Come by the office, Gary is actually the program coordinator of the Community Youth Building Program, but we invite anybody to show up Saturday, we have kids that just randomly show up, that aren't even older to do community service, which is fun. So we'd love to sit down and talk with you, get more people invested.
Go to the office?
Yes. It's right by you, where the new NICO tires is, it's the state building on the right, Children's and Families Department.
Okay. And so what's the event that you're having this weekend, where there's going to be fire?
We're having a bonfire with the chief behind, in Lyons Park, behind Domino's area, yeah. Come to the fire, it's fun.
Come to the fire, okay. Thank you, it's fun.
Oh, nine to one, and maybe Gary's going to bring a Dutch oven, so we'll see what we can make. We might get creative.
All right.
Any other questions? I really, I really appreciate your, your report. I know we really appreciate what Gary does and the kids, they've done a tremendous amount of work for us, most noticeably, and most recently, at the Visitor Center, and at the, and on Sixth Street. So there's a lot of things that, we get a lot of tangible benefit. But also, just, what I don't always know and understand is some of the numbers and the macro impact. I was having a conversation in my office, where I see people at this time of year, I see people once a year, it seems like, in my profession. Well, and, and some people from out of town that are familiar with Silver City were asking me, "So how's, how's crime? How's the issues? How's the youth? What, are you having problems?" And I actually sat back and I thought, you know, it's getting better, it's getting quieter, it's, you're not noticing as much as what we did even a few years ago. And as you're, as you're talking here and giving your report, I'm thinking, no wonder it's feeling better, you know, and I appreciate that. Especially with the time that, all the time that every one of you put into this, and we can't give you enough, although I know Alex tries to give his, every, every little bit he can, and will continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any else?
Well, thank you very much. Well, maybe you guys will come out and see the kids, I think they like to see some new faces. I really appreciate it, thank you for supporting us. Thank you, Alex. My later stay. I believe myself. Bye.
I just wanted to thank Bianca for, because she was named the JPO Officer of the Year in New Mexico.
Wow!
So, you know, it's hard to do with everything that the whole office is doing with the town, the community, so I really commend Bianca, Gary, the JPO Officer, for all the parts of things that they've been doing for the entire community, the kids. It's been very positive. Absolutely, I think. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Next report is High Desert Humane Society, report by Heidi Ogas.
Good evening, Councilor, Mayor's staff. Heidi Ogas with the High Desert Humane Society. We do have an agreement with the Town of Silver City to take in and have dogs and cats from the Town of Silver City. And that contractor agreement runs through your fiscal year, which is July through June, but we track the numbers on a calendar year. So you should have some handouts in front of you. If, if you want to start with the 2015, that's the breakdown of the animal intake for 2015. The impound is when an officer, an animal control officer, a police officer brings in an animal. Stray is when they're brought in from, with a community member, and then the OTI is owner turn-in animals. And comparatively, the numbers are pretty similar from year to year, based on the different months. We have high seasons and low seasons. If you'll turn it over for a moment, and look at the other side, that's a yearly comparison going back to 2007. So the overall animal intake was down slightly from the previous year, and overall has continually gone down, if you look at the graph below. We did have a little upswing in cats in 2014, but it is consistently going back down. Any questions on that so far? I did, I had pointed out at, at the conversations with the counselor, we were kind of curious to see how things looked in October, November, December, because that's when we didn't have an animal control officer for the Town of Silver City. And interestingly enough, intake on dogs was up slightly, both in October, November, December. Cats was down in November, but, or, excuse me, down in October, but consistent in November and December. So I did some, running some of the numbers overall for the Humane Society, and this would include both city and county, and other municipalities where we do take animals in. But overall, from the year 2000 to 2015, we've seen our intake decrease by 40%. Our adoption rate has doubled, so that's 100% increase. And euthanasia is down by one-third, or 33%. So we were really excited about that. And I'm hoping that it has to do with the fact that since 2002, which was the inception of our official spay and neuter program, our HOP program, we have issued out over $270,000 back into the community in the form of spay and neuter coupons, and I think the numbers are really starting to show that. The one thing that we would like to see go up, which is just spend pretty level and consistent, is our return to owner rate. And we're hoping that with our new microchipping program, that we should start seeing an increase in that going up. All adopted animals going out from the shelter that are four months and older are microchipped as part of the adoption program. So, just a couple other quick things to tell you, sort of some, some long-term planning here. We're hoping in the next five to 10 years to build a new adoption facility, where we would have better long-term care for the animals that are there for adoption. It would also give us better areas for visitation, and getting to know an animal, so that maybe we can increase the adoption even more. I'd also like to let the public know that we do have a cremation services and a memorial garden. And one of our big projects is, in the next year, we're hoping to purchase a new crematorium, so we'll be able to continue to provide that service. Is there any questions? Josh Preston.
Thanks for the report, Heidi. I think it's showing that there's at least a trend of going down in terms of animals being euthanized, and a trend going up in adoption, as you said. So, and leveling out of the actual take-ins, it's been 15 years, but it's doing, it's moving, and moving the needle's really important. My question is, is, do you all have a Facebook page?
Yes, we do.
And so folks can, is it just under the High Desert Humane Society?
Yes, Silver City High Desert Humane Society.
And you post pictures of adoptable animals, and when they're available?
We do post some on our Facebook page, they're also posted on our website.
Right.
And on our website is a direct link to Pet Finder, which will have all of the animals for adoption.
Oh, that's great, I'm glad to know that it has that. I already have enough dogs right now, two. But, but I think that, I noticed that there's a lot of groups, Humane Societies across the United States, that are really using that Facebook to get out and seek folks that will adopt their animals. So I would, you know, when you guys, I know you have the wonderful website, but I think that's also a good, good way to do it. Folks, a lot of folks are spending time on Facebook, and, and they certainly will rush in and help and adopt animals that might be threatened, or soon to be in a not-so-good position of maybe going to be euthanized. But I'm, I'm pleased to see this. Every year, I like to see the numbers go down, and, and it's nice to see them go down again, so thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for the comments on Facebook. Yeah, we do, we do post, we advertise our vaccination clinics on there, and we do specifically post special need animals.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Ogas, but you microchip all of the animals that are now going out and being adopted. But I adopted my kitty there five years ago, so could I bring her back in and get her microchipped?
You bet.
Do you have clinics, or what?
Yes, we do the microchipping during our vaccination clinics, which is the second Saturday of every month, and so the February 13th is the next one, and it's from 9 to noon. And you don't have to be getting any vaccinations, you can just come in for the microchipping. And can I say prices?
Yeah, please, please.
Twenty-five dollars.
Wow.
It's twenty-five dollars for the microchipping, and the registration of the microchip is good-for-life. The first year, you get all kinds of perks. You get a 24/7 veterinarian hotline, you get, if your animal's lost over 500 miles away, they'll pay $500 to relocate your animal back to you. They'll also help you do a pet amber alert, and help you put out posters. And that, those perks, if you want to keep those after the year, there's an additional cost, but the registration of the microchip is for life. And I, for the veterinarian clinics here, have readers that read our chips and vice versa.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Good news, staff reports. We'll go ahead and start with the police department annual report. So that's, I told them not to take an hour, so.
Well, I can always do what I did last year. Mayor, City Council, thank you for the opportunity to present the 2015 stats. In comparison, 2014, you've received the packets with all the additional information. However, before I get started, what we're going to do, because Sergeant Joseph Arredondo is going to present the citizen contact information. He's working, so I want to try and get him on as quick as possible, let him do his thing, and then get him back out on the street.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm just going to briefly go over the 2015 citizen contact forms that the officers do on, pretty much on a daily basis. For those of you who are not familiar with citizen contacts, what it is, is it's a consensual encounter between the officer and a citizen out in public, where the officer obtains information on maybe activity that's going on in the neighborhood, or downtown, or wherever it is, that the officer makes the citizen contact. So you may have a document in front of you, it's a two-page document. The first page is just the overall stats of those citizen contacts. They're broken down into 16 categories. On the second-page document is the top 10 complaints that the officers are receiving from the citizens. You know, number one being no complaints, or the officers are receiving positive information from, from the public. And then as you go down, frequent patrols, those are just probably from neighborhood peoples, asking officers to be in the area more frequently, if possible. Your third one there is traffic. That can be anything from speeding violations, to stop sign violations, whatever that is. And then on down, you've got your property crimes, panhandlers, homeless complaints, procedural questions, drugs, animal complaints, and then noise. So what we do with this information that's provided, we then do a target form that we're, that we're doing on a daily basis. So if somebody has a complaint of speeding on Little Walnut, well then, the supervisor at that point will then direct those officers to target that area of Little Walnut. If there's an issue going on downtown, which we're seeing a lot with the homeless, then we try and target that specific area as well. So that's how we, we go about doing the citizen contacts. Other than that, that's about it.
Is there any questions? Councilor Bedison?
Thank you for the report. I have to say, I'm really impressed that when you look at the number of contacts this year that you've had, 50% are no issue, complaint, or positive. So, so when you had mentioned that the backside was about complaints, and the first one was no issue, no complaint, it's really not a complaint, it's a really good thing. And so, you know, one of the things that often happens is that sometimes we get a citizen that might say, "Well, you know, we're just a few clicks away from being like Albuquerque." And I think that what this shows us is that we're not, that, that all of you are doing an excellent job. Yes, there are issues, and you are, as you said, making sure that you're targeting those areas. But all in all, I think that this, for me, shows that our officers are really listening out there, and, and they're doing a great job, and I commend all of you for doing that. It's, it's fabulous. I'm very excited about this, because we always hear all the complaints. Now you're seeing all the positives. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to express my accolades and appreciation for community-engaged policing. We are all in this together, and the more I think that people feel camaraderie, or at least comfort, with being able to talk with each other and with our officers is really good. I am not surprised that traffic is a high complaint, but I am surprised with the data that show that noise and animals seem to be very slow, very low, given what I get yelled at all the time about noise and animals. So what do you think is going on there? People just more willing to squawk at me about noise than you?
No, I mean, I think, I mean, and I'm just, I'm just assuming here. No, I mean, I think, I mean, and I'm just assuming here, but I think a lot of the times, it all depends on where the officer's getting the complaint. A lot of the officers are hitting downtown a lot, so they're getting a lot of input from businesses down there in that area. And then another area where they're trying to hit a little bit more frequently is like our residential. You know, so I think once we start hitting those areas a little bit more, you may see, you know, the animal, the noise come up a little bit, but a lot of our complaints or a lot of our contacts are being made in the downtown area and stuff like that. But we're trying to hit the residential areas a little bit more frequently than others.
Yeah. Thank you. I actually really want to encourage neighborhood engagement. And I know that some neighborhoods, there are more people out and easy to kind of like approach and tackle out than others. But there are also those, you know, big events where it can be neighborhood barbecue and stuff where perhaps you can approach.
Yes.
But, you know, I really want to say thank you. And please, keep engaging with the community.
Yes, ma'am.
Counsel Cal?
Just based on where I live, I'm probably the council that calls Central Dispatch the most. I live in a rather rough area. And one of the things I really, really appreciate is that every time I call, well, not every time, but several times it's happened now, every time I call, an officer comes out, deals with whatever the situation is, and then comes and knocks on my door and tells me what's been done, you know, how it's going to proceed or whatever. And I really appreciate that extra step because, I mean, you call and then you wonder if something happened. Well, now I know for sure that it's happened. And so I hope that you will continue to do that because it's really much appreciated.
Yes, a lot of the times, the officer will get with the dispatcher and they'll ask if the person reporting the incident wants an officer to contact them, whether over the phone or in personal. And so if you do contact dispatch and you do want an officer to speak with you directly, we urge that you let the dispatcher know, hey, can you have the officer call me or stop by my house and let me know what the outcome is? Because we still get a lot of complaints where it's like, well, they didn't say whether or not we want them to contact us. So if that's the case, nine times out of 10, the officer will call the person making the complaint and informing them what it is that he or she did.
You know, I just, what I've seen in the last, actually, couple of years, it's been a great improvement and very appreciated by a lot of my business colleagues, a lot of people in the downtown area, a lot of families. What I've noticed is there's always been a us-against-them mentality historically. And I know most people, and I do believe it's really, most people have a deep appreciation for the services that you guys provide. But since they've seen you out more out in the public and there's been some conversations and a little bit of getting to know our officers, it seems like there's a lot more trust and it's not, and it's more, we're in together, we're a community and we feel good. And even though I think sometimes, as I see a lot more of a presence and officers walking around in neighborhoods or certain areas, it seems there's, they may feel a little bit more bored, there's nothing bad going on, all they're doing is just walking and not issuing citations. But what happens is I think that's because that presence just puts everybody at ease, people become more comfortable, and you start to see more good activities going on. And the bad activities and the bad elements, they're starting to dissipate and try to leave those areas. So I just think on so many different levels, it's just been a great experience and I appreciate every officer. I've actually met a lot of officers. It's funny, we have such a big department, many of them, they've never met me. If they haven't watched a council meeting, they don't know who I am. So I've shook a lot of hands and just, in many cases, I almost had a full conversation before they actually figured out that I was the mayor. But it's been nice. They've always been pleasant and always been informative and inquisitive. They've asked what's going on, where is there issues and such. And it's been a pleasure over the last couple of years seeing it. And please convey that to the officers, that how much appreciation, not just from the council but from the citizens at large. It's a different world and it's nice.
Thank you. We'll relay that message and we'll continue doing the best that we can, so.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Just kind of continue on that subject for a minute. Because I read all of the citizen contact forms, I pretty much know where they are coming from. Some of the addresses that are given are probably by mistake, the home addresses of the individuals that are being interviewed by the officers. However, based on my view of all the contacts, there's about 30% that happen in downtown area. The rest of it is in the city at large. A lot of them are in the neighborhoods. Some are at businesses other than the downtown area. So we pretty much have a good sampling, if you will, survey of issues. And I do have some with me and I'll read a few of them. One of them, and these are last year's, so I just grabbed a bunch and brought them. This person wanted to complain about the homeless in the downtown area. What we do is we have a notation at the bottom for more frequent trolls in that area. And they also requested if the individuals are caught on a specific property, then they want a current trespass warning issued. This one stated that they'd like to see more trolls by Pitting Park due to shootings and kids smoking pot in the parking lot. This one has, was concerned at night because a couple of individuals are behind the UPS building and they've been on the property and they've been told not to be there yet or caught there and they'd like criminal trespass warnings issued. This one said that she sees an older model of a light, left a pickup truck to go through a residence on A Street and drop off some engine parts and backup and the lead seems suspicious. So those are kind of some of the ones that we catch through this. And what we do is we, as a sergeant said, we take a look at the area, see if there's additional need for targeting of those areas. This one approached the officer at Weston 12th, appreciated that the officer was sitting there at that intersection watching the four-way stall. And this one was concerned with the illegal parking on weekends during specialty events. He's concerned with people parking near his property and I won't read the rest of it because it gives the location. Come on up. So again, we have a bunch, overwhelming majority that really have no comments or very appreciative of the officer's contact, appreciative of the department's operations that we do. I invite you, if any of the council or the mayor want to come down and peruse those, feel free. I've got a stack about that fit in my office. Before we get started on the stats, there is one typo. It's on page eight, which would be 2015 total number of arrests. It'll be this document right here. If anyone's seen. Okay. And I'll just read the rest of it. Out of the 1767 arrests, 866 were for binge warrants, which were failure to appear, et cetera, contempt of court. Those arrests constitute 49% of all the arrests. I do have to say that over 2014, we did have a decrease in that area. I'll just cover this real quick. We had about 1,066 progress via benchmark or warrants for failure to comply, et cetera. So we had some success in reducing those through changing some of our programs. The 2015 statistical information is derived from the Department of Records Management System, Libel Reports, and Municipal Court Documentation. As in any statistical compilation, there is assumed an error rate by applying an approximate rate of plus or minus 2%. In most cases, the error rate is nonexistent, such as the number of calls for service and self-initiated activities. The number of calls for service increased in 2015 over 2014 by 241, which was a 1.85% increase in calls for service. Those numbers were 13,290 over 13,049. All these initial stats are depicted on the first page of the Excel spreadsheet. The number of self-initiated activities by the officers decreased over 2014 by 13,507. That's a 27,939 compared to 41,446. Now, the reason why this decrease ended up happening was because we had a change in programs as to how we actually get into neighborhoods and target specific activities. We also, instead of going out and just blanket running radar or issuing citations, we also reduced that dramatically this year, and I'll cover that further. So what ended up happening is that we use targeting for both areas that are considered high-crime rate areas and also high-crash areas. As an example, the intersections on 180, Silver Heights all the way out to 32nd Street. We target those intersections and try and do some enforcement. We did have some success in that area. We reduced traffic crashes in some of those areas. However, Silver Heights, Juniper, 16th Street, and Hudson continues to be our worst intersection Overall, the indicated statistical information has decreased in most areas documented. The overall indicated index crimes such as murder, forcible rape, robbery, simple and aggravated assault, burglary, larceny, and stolen motor vehicles has declined from 929 in 2014 to 867 in 2015. Now, if you take a look at, I believe it's page three, I also included in there the burglary rate, which is burglaries, I believe, were at 95 for residential and 50 for businesses. On that, I found out how many households we have and how many businesses we have within the Silver City jurisdiction and gave a percentage as to likelihood of being a victim of that As indicated in the provided pack on page one, larceny continues to be the highest of aforementioned eight crimes. However, there continues to be a decrease in larcenies from 569 in 2013 to 487 in 2014 to 473 in 2015. There was a decrease of 2.8% between 2014 and 2015. If you will refer to page three of your documentation, you will see a breakdown into larceny categories. Shoplifting continues to be one of the highest forms of larceny occurring within our jurisdiction. 285 in 2015 compared to 247 in 2014. So just as a quick side note, Walmart contributes greatly to our business. They have a great loss prevention crew that is catching people pretty much every day, two, three, four times a day. So it works out pretty well that they keep us busy, but it's good busy. Because if these people are also committing these crimes, they're probably committing other crimes within our jurisdiction. Excuse me for a second. Domestic violence saw a lower overall reporting rate in 2015 by 2.19%, from 549 in 2014 to 537 in 2015. Additionally, on page one, arrests were down by 15.25%, 1767 in 2015 compared to 2,085 in 2014. Citations are categories. Saw a drop of 54.24% from 15,807 in 2014 to 7,234 in 2015. As reported last year, of the potential decrease for 2015, we saw a significant drop in citations issued because of the more focused activities that we're doing. Reported forcible rapes remained at 10 for both years. Aggravated assaults decreased by 342 compared to 45 in 2014. Burglaries decreased by 4 from 149 in 2014 to 145 in 2015. The breakdown of burglaries is depicted on page three. I covered that. Damaged vehicles saw marked decrease in 2014 from 196 to 143, 27% decrease. Other criminal damage saw a decrease from 226 to 177, a 21.68% decrease. Robbers also saw a decrease by 2, from 10 in 2014 to 8 in 2015. Animal complaints increased by 4.49%, 1135 for 2014 compared to 1186 in 2015. Excuse me. Reported crashes were down by 0.63% from 2014, 479 to 476. This is all combined, private property and roadway crashes. This is the total crashes, both roadway and private property. For further information, please refer to page three. Roadway crashes dropped 4%. That dropped from 368 to 352. Driving home under the influence dropped 10, from 80 to 70, which was a 12.5% decrease. Is there any questions so far? And I'm going to have to ask you to speak up because both hearing aids just went dead on me.
No, I'm ready to get it.
Okay, I'll continue. Oh, quickly, let's move down. We'll continue with some of the strategies we have in place for this year and as always, make adjustments where needed. These strategies are to focus on various areas of high-crime trends in neighborhoods and businesses and areas where our crash rates continue to be high. One of our major goals, and I've mentioned this every year, is to get the community involved in organizing effective neighborhood watching. As a matter of fact, the public council persons brought that up continuously. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Still want to try and strive to get that accomplished. Some other areas or citizen contacts, we'll continue with that. We'll compile that so that we can make again a presentation. School visits, we do walk-throughs, school checks. We also are going to be setting up lectures in various schools, just specific classes. We also receive some books, coloring books, et cetera, that we'll present to the kids, go through that information, which is crime prevention types, don't use drugs, don't talk to strangers, et cetera, et cetera. Downtown foot and bike patrols, we're going to pick that up as soon as it starts warming up. We are continuing to do the foot patrols, but not on the level that we're doing last year. Participating in town sanctioned activities ensure safety for the public of those who know. Again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this information to the town council, mayor, and citizens of Silver City. I want to assure you, the men and women of the Silver City Police Department are working hard to ensure Silver City is a safe place to enjoy life and raise a family. Those members include not only the sworn person, but also my civilian staff. Without them, we would not have a safer town as we do. And I want to refer you also to the index that I provide every year. At, I believe it was sometime last year in the fall, there was an article put out that said Silver City is number seven, the most dangerous town in New Mexico. I disagree. Take a look at the stat. We provide the stats, we will provide the stats to anybody that asks for them. The percentage is based on a 10,000 population and a 15,000 population. Take a look at it for yourself. I invite you to be knowledgeable, in citizens of Silver City, I invite you to be knowledgeable in this area so that if anybody asks you, you can reply intelligently. Any questions? Oh, and one more comment, if you don't mind. It is illegal to tamper with campaign signs. It's contrary to city ordinance. If you get caught, you're probably going to end up seeing the judge over. So leave the signs alone.
Councilor Peterson?
Thank you, Mayor. So if you could briefly, Chief, do what you do every year and just briefly explain why papers and folks will put out that we are number seven, most crime laden city in town, in New Mexico, but we're not. You've mentioned that if you look at the statistics, that's the case, but sometimes the statistics are misrepresented.
Absolutely true. If you get on city data for the town of Silver City, they obtain, and the FBI UCR, which is inform crime reporting, also has a disclaimer on there that it should not be used for this because those aren't exact and they also are inflated at 100,000 population. It's wrong that they do that. It's wrong that they put that information out without coming to the location and getting the information themselves.
Well, thank you for saying that. I think, I know that when that article came out, I had a lot of questions from folks and I told them that it's a misrepresentation of our statistics and that if they really had concerns, to please talk with you because you could explain that we certainly don't regret that notion that we're that high in crime. We're a small municipality with an excellent police force. And I just want to, once again, commend the force and your civilian employees for all that they do for the town. And just tell all your officers, people really like it when they wave at them, you know, if they're at a stop sign and it's really, I've had lots of folks say, it's really nice. They'll wave if I'm in my yard, they'll wave back, and I think that that's part of that community policing, just, you know, even doing something as simple as waving to each other. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
One second. I'd just like to add, just because we're talking about those numbers. I've had that conversation with a number of people and one of the things that I like to point out is, you know, when you look at other indicators, you look at our grocery receipts tax collections, that's more like a 20,000 population town. When you just put a three-mile perimeter around our community, we're closer to a 17,000, 18,000 population town. We are the commercial hub for southwest New Mexico. We may sleep 10,000, but we are probably pushing closer to 20,000 during the day. So when we look at those stats, 10,000 isn't the appropriate number to be utilizing anyways. And when you actually start looking at it from, whether it's 17, 18, 20,000 people population, that is, and you look at those type of statistics, that actually feels more appropriate. Not only is it more appropriate, it actually is logical. It's understandable. It makes sense when you compare, start to compare us with other communities. So we always want to be careful about that sleeping 10,000 at night. Our borders are probably not where they necessarily need to be. A lot of our residents are just outside those borders. Councilor Amos Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that I saw one of those lists just this last week and we were now the 10th. So things are improving, I guess, but, you know, the reasoning is more sound. Chief, one of the things that I hear from citizens is that, and perhaps this ties into one of the things that Councilor Kano and the sergeant talked about, which is they wonder how many of these burglaries are, the goods that were taken were returned and how many things get solved. And I think that that might be something to really talk about at another time. The process, I know it takes sometimes years for the thing to go through, but if there's some way to get citizens a sense of the things coming to completion, I think that that would be really helpful.
Whenever we end up with a burglary and we're able to recover the property, what ends up happening is that the court system wants to have the actual item for evidence. On occasion, and it's very few, the district attorney's office will allow us to take photographs of it and then return the property. Most of the time, we have to hang on to that property until after the case is adjudicated. After that occurs, then we make every attempt to return the property to the owner. Now, if anybody has a question about the status of their property that we have in our evidence, they can call at any time and we'll give them the status of it. As a matter of fact, we've had a number of people that have called prior to the adjudication of the case that would like to get the property back. Sometimes it happens, sometimes it doesn't. It just depends on the needs of the court and the district attorney's office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Kano?
We have a short recess. Second motion.
We have a motion second for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in recess. All this meeting back to order. Still under staff reports, very quickly, just as my own little report, I'd just like to announce that there is going to be the regional science olympiad for the middle and mid and high school students at Western Saturday, beginning from 10:00 a.m. through 3:00 p.m. and it's visitors welcome, so always a good thing. My kids participated in that. It's really quite neat to go watch those students perform. On another note, Alex, would you mind just giving a brief update on that intersection at Pope and 180?
180.
Oh, perfect.
So basically, I had a discussion with Peter Benia today and basically what's happened is originally, first of all, that's a state highway. So ultimately, we don't have the final say-so in exactly how it's repaired. The state does. And as we have realized in dealing with the state, it's not easy. So initially, we requested if they would allow us to use the same pedestal and just straighten it out and put the light back and everything back up. They said no. They wanted engineer design, an engineer to design a fix, which basically is a replacement of the pedestal and everything. So the state has the designs. They finally told us that they would have all the response on the design by Friday, a little later than Friday, and that way we can go out for quotes to have the repairs made, the replacement done. Early next week, we should have that in place. We're looking about $17,000, $18,000 to repair it. The only thing I don't know yet is exactly how long it's going to take for the pedestal to come in. Other than that, it's just labor. So Peter mentioned originally, there might be eight weeks lead time to get the pedestal in. We're hoping that as soon as I find out, I'll let you know exactly about how long it's going to take. But we should find out from a contractor by the end of next week because we need to get three quotes and they need to look at the design and everything. So by the end of next week, we should have a really good idea of about how long exactly it's going to take.
Councilor Peterson?
Thanks, thank you, Alex. I think one of the real important things is to realize that this is a state highway. If it was on one of our streets, it probably wouldn't take this long because we have to go through the state.
Yeah, typically, we would have just, in the same circumstances, if we would have looked at it and decided whether we were going to use the same pedestal or not, we would have had the design done and we would have made the decision right away. We would have already had a contractor onboard and we would be waiting for the parts already. But having to go through that, those extra steps of first asking them, getting a response about, no, we can't use the original pedestal, and then now waiting for them to respond on the design. It's those extra steps that make things take longer. And again, we don't have the final say-so.
Right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everybody realizes it's not a failure of town staff at all. It's the process and the fact that the state is the one that has that final decision rather than us. So things would have moved a lot quicker otherwise. But thank you.
Do you mean by state? You mean Santa Fe?
Yeah. They haven't been easier to work with since 1875. It hasn't gotten any easier.
Any other staff reports?
Yes, I do want to discuss the baseball, the Scott Park Sports Complex. I don't know if all of you know, but there is one of the fields that has had, we've had to lock up because the field has actually settled. We noticed that there's some rectangular areas within the field that have actually settled and have basically sunk by two, three inches in different areas and for safety reasons, we had to stop. Initially, we've been working with the contractor prior to the warranty expiring. They came in, pulled up the turf. We brought in the turf company to pull it up because we don't want to lose the warranty on the turf, which is 20 years. But we came in and we had to do test, the compaction and all the drainage because there's a lot of drainage under the fields that was designed under the field. All that, all that came clean. And so what we've finally identified that it is actually settling of the old landfill. That landfill was closed in 94, 1994, so we're, what, 20 years have passed and it barely started settling. We did notice that on the main landfill, on the western part up, in the area, there are a lot of areas that, there are areas that we've identified that have actually settled in those same rectangular shapes. And through discussions with the Solid Waste Bureau, a lot of times what happens is you might have a big project where they demolish a building and you have a lot of organic material in one area that it starts decomposing at one time and you end up getting these rectangular areas that, because the cells are built in rectangular patterns. And so that has happened, so what's going to end up happening is we're going to, we actually had, the engineering firm actually had a flyover of a small drone that took pictures of a field and that's how we identified, we were able to match those to what we saw on the, on the old landfill itself. So we're going to have to repair that field, but we're going to wait, we're going to have to wait a little while to ensure that it finishes settling before we go in and do any major repairs. So the funds that we did have set aside from legislative allocation for the building of a concession stand, I'm going to request that it's changed over to fix the baseball field. You know, we do have the concession stand that is there. It's been brought up to code. It's got water, it's got electricity, it's got everything that a regular concession stand would have. It's just not.
Brick.
You know, it has all the amenities of a regular concession stand and the only thing that we're going to have to work with is to continue to struggle with is the porta-potties for a while. Because the concession stand that we did design, it had the footers because of the landfill that we didn't want any settling, something like the issues that we're dealing with with the visitor center right now settling, we didn't want that to happen. So because of that, it almost doubled the cost of the concession stand. So when we put it out to bid last year, we had like 300,000 set aside, the bid came in around 500,000 and, you know, we just didn't have the money to do it. So they do have the necessary equipment and facilities out there to hold good events. It's just they're going to have to be patient so that we can get everything done. Some of these things have been out of our control. One thing that just recently happened is the netting out there, the poles and the netting did come down with the last major snowstorm that we had, but it was all under warranty. So they're out there, they're going to be fixing them here in the next few weeks and repairing them at, not at our cost, at the warranty. And so there have been some areas where the turf has sort of come wrinkled up and have come up in some areas of the facility. That has all been repaired. It's all part of the warranty. It's, will all be taken, it has been taken care of because these are some of the complaints that we've been getting from some of the organizations that use the facility. But, you know, things are being taken care of right away that can be taken care of. You know, that one field is something that is natured, we can't, we can't, we don't, in fact, those fields were built on a part of the old landfill that wasn't supposed to be there. So as you know, back a few years ago, we had to go, went and found out, found out that the town had actually thrown trash where it wasn't supposed to be. And so where we were supposed to have monitoring wells south of the supposed landfill, they actually put the monitoring wells in the landfill because they put trash where it wasn't supposed to be. And so we've cleared all that up with the Solid Waste Bureau, but, you know, it's just nature that we can't, we're going to have to deal with. And other than that, do you have any questions on anything?
Question?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along, under new business, first item is approval disapproval of resolution number 2016-02. number 2016-02, a day to honor the territorial charter of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. I'm sponsoring this resolution. You know, when I became counselor six years ago, I really started, that was the beginning of really getting an education on what our territorial charter is. And it's just a phenomenal document. It really makes us unique, especially as a model of self-rule. We have powers in this document that are unheard of, to the point of federal law prohibiting states and territories from ever doing this again. This was the impetus of United States action. But the reality is, is really in a day and time of centralizing government where states are trying to seize control, and that's very, very evident in our state, the ability to self-govern is huge. One of the, in one of the wherethes, we actually point out a very, very important person, Juan Patron, who is the, actually the first Hispanic Speaker of the House of Representatives for our state, who presided over this action and got it passed and then signed by the governor. You know, he, not only was he the Speaker of the House, but he, out of Lincoln, out of Lincoln County, he was the representative, but lead Grant County was part of his constituency. So he was actually our representative speaking on this. And huge and just a great reputation, you know, he's somebody that, as I push this forward and hopefully this passes, we need to do some recognizing of this gentleman. We need to honor his name much more thoroughly for what he's done for our community and actually getting this territorial charter passed, which was, I believe, the second attempt at getting this passed. This did not pass a couple of years prior to that. So, but it's a very unique document. It allows us to regulate, you know, many things that most communities don't like taxes. It's, you know, there's a reason why we've kept a territorial charter and have not come under state charter, state incorporation, like so many. We're the last territorial charter. The other territorial charters, which were considerably weaker than ours, you know, they, for administrative purposes, for whatever reasons, they chose to just go ahead and reincorporate under state law. We've chosen to stick with our territorial charter because of its uniqueness, because of its power, because of the history behind it, what led to this document. And hopefully, some other of our council, maybe our staff can help educate us a little bit because it is a truly monumental document. I had considered bringing this up as a proclamation, just doing it as a one-year recognition of this charter, but I really want this to be a town, something that the town takes pride in year after year, that this, almost like the federal government has their federal holidays, we have our city holiday. I want this to be looked at and celebrated year after year. I know I'm such, relatively so close to the time of our charter. There may not be anything too big happening this year, but I want organizations, the ACN, the AMRAC, Main Street, I want all those organizations to start really thinking about celebrating this in the future and doing something special for Silver City. But even as we move forward, I'm hoping that town staff, the museum might do something small and try to recognize this great document, which was signed in on February 15, 1878. So it's coming up on that, on its birthday. And this resolution is designating the closest Saturday to that date as being the date that we celebrate it. I guess this year would be the 13th of February. And hopefully, we can do something good. And hopefully, Tracy with the museums here, I'd like for him to maybe say something here in a little bit. But first, I'll let Alex and, or maybe even our attorney Scavron, who's done a huge body of research on this, mainly from the standpoint, this creates some legal anomalies. We are not like most cities and we do not run like most cities because of this document. We are, in fact, what we've all found, when we go to a lot of our municipal league trainings, we get trained on how to be counselors. And every one of those that I've been at, they've had to say, "Now, this applies to everybody?" Except, "Is there anybody from Silver City? This doesn't apply to you." We are unique and we have power and self-governance that most people do not. Mr. Scavron, would you mind educating us just a little bit on this in the 35 seconds that Alex gave you?
He's got his time right there. But this is something I really enjoy, to do the research and to find out in the midst of a very violent Wild West time, when you read over this handwritten charter and you see the concerns of the people at that time, the welfare of the people, giving them the rights to run, you know, we have the only charter that allows us to run our own school system. We have a charter that allowed for everything from regulating gambling, which is something that we've talked about, to preventing unsafe activity in the town, storage of dynamite, horses running wild down the street. This was all meant to make it a safe town for families. And the motivation for the 1878 charter was directly responsive to the greed and corruption of Santa Fe and the Santa Fe ring. Now fortunately, everything is fine up in Santa Fe now, but we should still keep this charter. I said that with tongue in cheek. It is a model for self-government in the state. It is the only territorial charter. Santa Fe had its charter and gave it up to be reincorporated under state law. We have not done that. It's a beautifully written document. And I'd like to read something from the Barnes &amp; Noble review of this Juan Patron. And nobody had heard of him. Nobody that I had talked to statewide or even locally had heard of this man. He lived in Lincoln. He was a teacher. And he was kind of tried to be a mediator between the forces that were in the Civil War in Lincoln County and with the corruption coming down from Santa Fe. There's one book on him. He's not mentioned in a lot of the writings about Silver City, but there's a book, it's called Juan Patron: A Fallen Star in the Days of Billy the Kid by Paul Sompanas. And this is the overview from Barnes &amp; Noble. Juan Patron lived through one of the bloodiest chapters of the American West. The 1878 feud known as the Lincoln County War in New Mexico, reputed for his heroics. Patron tried to tame a frontier plagued with violence, illiteracy, and greed. First as a teacher, then as a desperado hunter, and eventually as Speaker of the Territorial House at age 25, the youngest person to hold this position in New Mexico history. With keen, well-researched detail and the skill of a master storyteller, author Paul Sompanas leads us through Patron's life and times and his fate at the hands of a Texas cowboy named Michael Maney, who outdrew him in a dramatic showdown. He was killed in a gunfight, I think at 39 years old. Many believe that had he lived, Patron would have become the first New Mexico congressman when it entered the Union in 1912. And when you look at the handwritten charter of the town of Silver City, there's the signature of Juan B. Patron. So that's what my history, my studying has shown. I think that maybe Tracy has about an hour, hour and a half we've allocated for him to talk about it.
The white one? Ah, thank you. Thank you. Can you hear me? Well, thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman, Mayor. I have been doing a crash course on the town charter the last couple of days. And what I would like to do is offer the museum, should this resolution pass, as a point of departure for this first year's celebration, we will pull together a small exhibit using historical photographs from the time period, as well as an overview of all the events that led up to these citizens of 1878 deciding it was time for such a charter and the work that they did to get it to Santa Fe to pass. So I would invite, should the resolution pass, I would invite all of the residents of Silver City, young and old, to come to the museum on February 13th to see our display and to enjoy some refreshments. We'll have some refreshments there at 1 o'clock. And enjoy the day. And what I find about this resolution is the part that is meant to enhance everyone's awareness of the history of our town and our area. And such a resolution having this occur each year, I think the celebration will grow. I'll certainly recommend that we do a larger exhibit for 2017, as that will also be the 50th anniversary of the Silver City Museum.
You know, I'd like to just add, you know, there's even language in this charter about community, community work. You know, very few government charters like this bring communities together and have such buy-in by the community. And that, and we see this today, we talk about it today, how much of a community and how important community is to Silver City. And it was back then. And just, you know, I always like to look back and look at the strength of character and the type of people that created this document and created our town, some of our fathers of this community. You know, Silver City in New Mexico, the first city to have a brick schoolhouse, the first city to have a normal school, the first city to have electricity, the first city to have paved roads. This city is a leader on so many fronts. And it's funny that sometimes this great community forgets how strong and how forward-thinking this city is, is and always was. It's just amazing. And if in some of my last meetings here and some of my last actions as mayor, I really do not want to see this community forget what it's done and where it was and how rich of a history we truly do have. Counsel Badson?
You know, Mayor, one of the things that you had said earlier is that, you know, when we attend our trainings, you know, we're always separated out. And there actually is a reason for that because I was very vocal about the fact that the Springer Act did not apply to us, that we retained, that's the congressional action in 1886 that said that no other state could ever give the type of powers that we have to any individual community. And I would always raise my hand and they'd say that there were only two types of government, you know, and I'd say, "No, no, Silver City has its own territorial charter and the Springer Act didn't change that and we'll never give it up." I mean, it's, to have lesser powers like the other communities in the state, I think, as you said, we need to celebrate the fact that we do have an inordinate amount of power and a model for self-governance, as you and also Robert Scavron have pointed out. I also wanted to say that Silver City was also the first city to tax its citizens for a public school. Not only the first one to have a public school, but to tax its citizens to pay for a public school because the mothers of Silver City wanted to ensure that all children within its borders would be able to have an education. So we have first upon first upon first, like you said. And I just would like to say that in the future, certainly, as long as I'm at the University Museum, we'll coordinate with the Silver City Museum. We probably won't be able to move that fast this year because of things going on, but it's very close, not in terms of years, but in terms of its date to when the university was created. And that's February 11th of 1893, also by an act of the state. Territory. It was a territorial school, a normal school. So I think this is really exciting. I am happy that we're doing this. I know that over the years, folks have talked about some of the unique things that are in our charter, some things that, about the amount of time that men have to tithe to work. Yeah, and it would be interesting to even say that that's what we're doing on the day, is that we're celebrating that. If you're able-bodied, you're supposed to give a certain amount of work to the town. I don't think we have to do it just for, you know, whoever would like to contribute, but that would be a day of service for the town. And that could be coordinated with things. So there's a lot we could do. And I know that it's fast approaching, but I think that in the future, we're going to have some really wonderful celebrations. So thank you for sponsoring this and moving this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you were very eloquent in your speech about this territorial charter. We have it accessible via our website, don't we, Ann? Is the territorial charter on PDF form, can citizens access it via our website?
The handwritten one?
Yes, the handwritten one. I thought that you had, that that would be wonderful, I think, for everyone to, you know, download it and read it because it really is beautifully written. And I just want to say, I really look forward to all of the able-bodied men. I believe that they were supposed to work on streets and sidewalks. And I also understand that we can fine for cursing on Sundays. So I think that, there we go.
I've located a copy of the charter, translated into Spanish some years ago. And Ann has told me that she can scan it and put it on our website. So if people want to read it in two languages, it'll be there.
Was that one handwritten? No? Counsel Kano, did you have something real quick?
No, I would think I was going to do it, she was going to do it, but.
Counsel Kano?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of resolution number 2016-02, a day to honor the territorial charter of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion.
We have a motion second to approve of resolution number 2016-02, a day to honor the territorial charter of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. Is there any further discussion? Does anybody in the public have any comments, concerns?
We have a paper.
Absolutely. We have a motion second as read into the record. All those, roll call.
Counsel Kano?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Emmett Smith?
Aye.
Counsel Badson?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item under new business is council direction on the automated recycling program. Mr. Brown?
As I've been talking about for the last six months at least, staff has been working on... has been working on moving towards the automated recycling collection, taking it over from the landfill. And so, in your packet, you were given information that Mr. Timmy had provided to me and to Peter Benya, as well as Solid Waste Authority, so that we, staff, so that we could look and identify what was our best avenue to move forward. And so, basically, what we're looking at doing is providing, the information that I provided you on that summary sheet as far as cost has actually changed since I gave that sheet, because we had another meeting with the recycling staff. And they've actually been monitoring how much each residence has been throwing, I mean, putting out for recycling, and they're going to be doing over the next, at least, month, so that we can identify if, initially, we were just going to go to 95-gallon containers for residential. We don't see, there's a lot of, like, especially seniors and small families, that the 95-gallon is going to be three-quarters empty most of the time. So, we're looking at purchasing both 65- and 95-gallon containers, as far as residential. As far as commercial, we're looking at not purchasing 300-gallon tubs. Commercial is only cardboard. And so, we will be looking at only purchasing 450-gallon tubs for the commercial entities. All the dumpsters and tubs and everything will be able to be picked up with the side loader, so we will not have to purchase a front-end loader for commercial entities. So, what we're looking at doing is purchasing two brand-new side loaders, put them in service for garbage, regular garbage collection, and then taking two of the current garbage collection vehicles and using them for the recycling. And so, the way that we're going to pay for this is through, first, we're going to decrease the recycling contract. Currently, we pay $212,000 a year for recycling. That's for the collection and processing of all the recyclables. Their budget is about $360,000. The difference is made up from them selling the recyclables. So, basically, the way our contract works is the total budget to recycle, so 360, we get credit for all the recyclables that they can sell, and then we're responsible to pay the difference. Well, now that we will be actually doing the collection of the recyclables, that will decrease how much we are actually paying for them, because their budget will go down. And so, we will use that part of, well, all of those funds to go towards the debt service of the vehicles and the bins and tubs that we'll be needing to purchase. We'll also be, get, we're hoping, and that by doing the curbside recycling, you know, make it easier for customers to recycle, because you're not having to take down two, three, four, recycle 23-gallon containers as you do now. You'll be able to roll down one 95-gallon or 65-gallon container and make it easier. So, we're hoping to push it. And, you know, we'll be able to promote it by promoting our recycling through advertising and helping from that side. If necessary, we can push it through rate structure, if necessary, which worked very well on the water side. We'll also need to amend the, I'm going to propose that we amend the, this collection ordinance for the rate structure. Currently, in the ordinance, it had an automatic 3% rate increase every year, which ended two years ago, but I've chosen not to come back and request that we extend that automatic 3%. I'd rather we go towards what we do with the water, is every year, we have to prove what's necessary as far as the rate structure for what we're going to do that year. So, we'll be also bringing a new ordinance to amend the rates, as well as the requirements for the automated system. We are not going to be able to collect glass anymore. We've never, we do not, at the landfill, we do not recycle glass. Residents in town separate it, and what happens is we take it, and it doesn't go in the landfill, it goes out to the fowlers, the construction, and they're supposedly supposed to use it for their base course, but they haven't been doing it. And so, most of the time, we're ending up throwing a lot of the glass. And right now, we'll not, we will not be able to deal with the glass, because there is no market, there has been no market for the glass, anywhere. And so, you know, we might be able, in the long term, looking at doing something like purchasing a pulverizer or something, once the solid waste authority gets on its feet. And that way, we can pulverize the glass and use it as sand. And as, hopefully, in the next few years, we, because we want to go to the green waste diversion program, we might be able to do that with, not the same thing, but a pulverizer for glass, so that we can use, divert that waste as well for beneficial use, even though we probably won't be able to sell. We might be able to sell it as sand, clean sand. It might be another market for the solid waste authority if we buy the equipment, to us at the cost of the equipment. But as far as the collection on the recycling right now, it's just unfeasible, because we can't have it combined with the single-stream recyclables, because then they'll contaminate the single stream, the way it is right now. So, that's the one issue that we'll not be able to fix. But as you see right from the information I provided you, we're looking that we're probably going to have to out-of-pocket, we're looking about $30,000 a year, which will easily be able to be absorbed within the current rate structure. I can only see that we'll have to increase rates if we, not have to, but if we want to push recycling. For instance, we might go ahead and increase tipping fees on the, increase sizes if you're a recycler. I mean, look at things like that. That's not part of what I'm really looking at right now, but it's all about getting the system in operation so that we can get as much recyclables as possible. Over the last month, the recycling at the solid waste authority has increased quite a bit. In fact, the staff has asked me to hire some additional temporary staffing, because they can't keep up with the recycling. And they've noticed that there's been a sharp increase in recycling over the last few months. We hope it continues, because every little bit that you recycle means we have to pay less in tipping fees. And that means, gives us more opportunity not to have to raise the rates. So, those are, I just want to make sure you guys are okay with me continuing to proceed with it, because I'll have to get financing for the equipment and everything. So, in the next few months, I'll be bringing the ordinances for the financing and everything to you, as well as any bid awards for equipment as well. So, I don't want anybody to be surprised.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this has been one of the things that I've asked for, and I'm excited that we're at the point where we will hopefully have this working within the next, what, six months or something like that, when the new year begins, the new fiscal year begins. So, I was pleased with that really detailed report that was provided by Dr. Timmy and by your staff. So, one of the things that I just wanted to talk real briefly about was that this will extend the life of our landfill, the more we recycle.
It's already in the permit renewal, as we seen, the town started recycling earlier on in the permit. It was, the recycling rate was very, very low, because that was when we didn't have to pick up on garbage and we didn't pay for, pay to throw anything, there was no incentive to recycle. But as we've incentivized, the recycling has increased quite a bit. I think they were around 30%, 25%. We're at 25% right now. So, I mean, just think, that's 25% less that we have to pay in tipping fees. That 25, cell space at the landfill is very expensive. The landfill was permitted for 20 years initially, that was the expected life. The expected life now of the entire landfill is 58 years. We've got about 38 years to go. The permit renewal was approved two weeks ago, so we have a new permit. And so, you know, things are, as far as longevity and, you know, we want, I've been working with Mr. Stady on the green waste diversion programs and stuff like that as well. But those are things that we're not going to be able to do until the solid waste authority is actually in the financial condition to be able to do it, which is about two or three years. And they're under probation for three years, so we can't do anything really to get us in trouble. We can't experiment at all. So, yes.
So, I think it's really important to clarify that at this point in time, there is no increase in our rate structure, that this is going to be implemented without an increase currently.
That's correct. This is showing that we can do it without a rate increase. I should have, should make it very clear, any rate increase that I talked about was as an incentive to recycle. I thought it was necessary, but it would be an incentive to recycle. So, you know, please make that, write it down.
Well, and I think it's important to say that, because one of the things that I've talked with folks about, who are concerned about the amount of money they're paying for water or for trash, is that you can increase your recycling and get a smaller trash can, and you're only going to pay for what you throw away, which is the smaller trash can, the lower the cost. So, I'm pleased that we're doing this, and thank you for bringing it forward. And as far as I'm concerned, keep going forward on it. And I know that rest of the council has to say something, but yes, this is very, very promising, and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too, I'm an avid recycler. I've talked to Mr. Brown about the fact that I never filled up my trash can, my smaller one, and is there any way I could get like a six-monther or something? I, just a council comment, I want to question. So, when you're going to be investigating financing, I saw on the report something about the Green Community Designation, is that still in place?
We're already, we're already designated.
You remember, we designated it, yes. But are we going to be able to apply for a credit or something?
We can't use those credits. We'll have to go back to the state board of finance. So, I'm looking at our regular tax exempt financing, which is down around 1.5%, 2% right now. So, I'm looking at that. Also, there was some financing at 0% that Terry had recommended, so we'll look at that as well.
Gee money, gee money. And you know, this town is full of artisans. Surely, we could find some way to use glass.
We, anything we can get, I wish there was somebody telling what to do with it, because it's just.
It's a big problem to toss out of the artisans town, don't you think?
Is there any objection to his path at this point?
No.
Think you have your direction?
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of election workers for the regular municipal election to be held on March 1st, 2016. Mrs. Mackey?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is our list of our election workers that I'd like for your approval. Most of them have attended the election trainings that I do every year. I'm required to do an election school for the workers. There are a couple new ones, but they've already said they'll come to the school on February 24th. I have rotated some of the folks that were alternates last year. I've rotated them in to work at the Voting Convenience Center, so they can learn the auto-vote system, working with the voters that way. I want to do that each year, so they all stay trained. And if I may, before I ask for your final approval on it, may I give a little bit of info about the election? Right now, it's the absentee voting period, and it'll be absentee voting at City Hall until February 26th. The early voting begins on February 10th, and that's when the voters can come in. They still have to fill out the absentee application, but they, when they get their ballot, they can feed it through the vote tabulator machine. So, it stays a couple steps in the process. Election Day is March 1st. We'll have one polling place at the Voting Convenience Center. And the election is for the elective offices of Mayor, also for Counselor in District 2 and Counselor in District 4. If anyone needs information about absentee or early voting or elections at all, they can call me at City Hall at 534-6346. Do you have any questions?
Councilor Bedison?
I move to approve of election workers for the regular municipal election to be held on March 1st, 2016.
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion as stated.
We have a motion second to approve of, approval of election workers for the regular municipal election to be held on March 1st, 2016. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion second as read into the record. Roll call.
Councilor Bedison?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Kano?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of Resolution Number 2016-03, adopting recount/recheck costs for the regular municipal election to be held on March 1st, 2016. Mrs. Mackey?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is the first time I've asked to do a resolution to adopt the recount and recheck cost. I have them available each year, just in case it happens. And I thought it might be informative to you as a council and to our candidates that, you know, if they choose to do an application with me for a recount or recheck after the election, then there are costs involved. So, I do outline those costs on page 2 of the resolution. Do you have any questions?
And it's a range, it's a range of?
It's a range on how the candidate decides if they want to do a recount or recheck at one polling place, such as the Voting Convenience Center, or just the absentee early voting, or both. So, there's a range from small to high. If they want to do both places, then you can look at the high numbers.
Okay. So, the high number would be just under $1,700 to get a recount/recheck?
They want to do recount/recheck for both polling places.
Okay. I'll entertain the motion. Councilor Kano?
I move to approve of Resolution Number 2016-03, adopting recount/recheck costs for the regular municipal election to be held on March 1st, 2016.
We have a motion second for approval of Resolution Number 2016-03, adopting recount/recheck costs for the regular municipal election to be held on March 1st, 2016. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion second as read into the record. Roll call.
Councilor Kano?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Amos Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Bedison?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Bedison?
I move to adjourn. Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
We have a motion second to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.